This time I call the September meeting of the County Commission to order. For the record, I wanted to know that this is the first time in many, many years that the commission meeting has been on the third Thursday instead of the second Thursday. We had at least two, if not three commissioners were not going to be able to be here last week, me being one of those. And they asked to move it because of no zoning issues that was previously advertised in the paper for them to come was here tonight, which is unusual. We agreed at the work session two weeks ago to move the session to tonight. Of course, you see Commissioner Tankersley is on vacation somewhere, I think Alaska or somewhere, but anyway. That's the reason we have beaten on the 21st instead of our last week. That won't happen again. We'll be back to our regular second Thursday of the month next month. We honored tonight to have with us the legendary Welcome Mason. The school campus is named after him. He was principal of the high schools in Lincoln County for some, I think, 102 years before he finally decided to retire. Mr. Mason is a former member of this group. He served on the County Commission, I think, from 1989 to 96. He was here eight years as one of our commissioners, and I enjoyed working with him over those years. He is here tonight to give the invocation. Mr. Mason, if you would come to the podium. After he gives the invocation, we will remain standing for the pledge of allegiance of the flag led by Commissioner Clyde.
Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this land for our heritage, we humbly beseech you, Lord, that we may always prove to be ourselves and to work humbly within the parameters you set for us all. We will be always mindful, oh Lord, of your favor. I'm glad to be known as servants of yours, carrying out your will. Blessed out of county with honorable people, with pure people in names. Give us, oh Lord, freedom from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from any other evil way. Defend our liberties and continue to fashion us as servants of yours, these citizens of Lincoln County deserve. In due witness, ones who are serving in the capacity of County Commissioners, may they be governed by your love and compassion for us all. There may be opportunities provided and measures given for our development. We pray for the success of this county under the leadership of our able Commissioners, and may they use their intellect and compassion for mankind to be the kind of servants that we all would emulate. To Jesus Christ, we ask it all. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Mason, I know you have to leave and go to another function. I hope you don't mind me saying this. I meant to say it at the beginning, but how many people can come and do what he just did? Leave here, get in their automobile, and go to another meeting at 97 years of age? Mr. Mason is 97 years old, so one of the compliments, the ambulance directors here, we would all like a little bit of your blood if you could give it.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave. Thank you, Mr. Mason, again. We appreciate you. We also have somebody here tonight that's new with us. He needs to go down that elevator. I told him he didn't listen. Y'all make sure he makes it down those steps. We have a native Lincoln Canyonian who has been gone for a number of years. Been here all her life, graduated Lincoln County High Schools, had a very successful career in the news business, journalism, and working for various different newspapers. She decided to come home, I think because Lincoln County will just bring you home, but she came home to help look after her mother, too, I'm sure. Angie Morrison is with the Lincoln Journal, and I understand you're going to be covering us now instead of Ms. Smith, is that correct? Well, welcome home and welcome to Lincoln County politics. Thank you, Angie, and we're glad to be working with you. Is there a motion that we approve the minutes of the previous meetings?
Some movement, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Discussion on the motion. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Item five is the approval of the agenda directive. Broom has requested because there's nothing new other than what you heard in the work session. Item 15 is the USDA grant loan for the new ambulance and equipment. And he stepped out to help Mr. Mason, but without objection, we're going to remove that from the agenda. It's nothing new and nothing to vote on. Okay, no objection, we'll delete item 15. That's already been taken care of, it was already voted on a while back. Moving right along, agenda item 6A, the Office of Emergency Services Director Broom.
We need a motion to approve.
Oh, we didn't get the motion to approve. We got a motion on the second, I'm sorry.
We don't have a motion or a second.
We didn't do either one.
Oh, the agenda?
Not yet.
We did on that one. Thank you for correcting me early in this meeting. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda?
A little, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Discussion on the motion of the agenda. Chair, here's none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. 6A, we're going to come back to, we go into 6B. Recreation Department Director Glaze is not here. You have his report in your book. He is at the complex, activities going on, but if you will look, he's got a written report to us. I think soccer has started. I was told that we have about 135 to 133 participants in the fall soccer program at the complex, and they are out there on Tuesday and Thursday night, so that's where he is. Also, you will see down that this will be coming to us, but Ms. Tammy Norman, Greg Norman's wife, is applying for pickleball grant for us for the pickleball, which will be used at the current concrete slab where the basketball goes used to be. We have indoor pickleball that is doing really well inside the gymnasium, but basketball will be starting a little later, and we're going out there. Hopefully, if we can get a grant to build some pickleball courts, they are looking. Director Glaze told me, kind of, if you turn into the lower drive going to the Ag Center, to the left over there, that's where they're looking, it may be putting pickleball. I didn't realize it until a few months ago. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport, I think, that we have. Also, out of the Recreation Department, since he's not here, and I'm giving you a report, the last item, he says, is we have, I think, 11 or 15 lights at this multi-purpose soccer field that are out. While they're out, we are changing them to LED lights, just those 15. I forget how many lights is out there, it's a good many. Those bulbs are $400 apiece. Rail Electric has agreed to get a bucket truck 60 foot high to go up to change them. It was $3,500 a day, which we think we could do it today, but it was $3,500 to rent that truck. Nobody here has one that would go that high. Rail Electric has agreed to send this truck down without any cost to the county, and they will have to send one of their men, Mr. John Moon, will be on it along with Mr. Drake, who's with H&amp;H, to replace these lights. And we will have to pay Mr. Moon, because he's probably coming on a Saturday on his off day. So that's what's going on out at the recreation complex. Have any questions? Talk to Director Glaze. We're going back to 6A, the Office of Emergency Services Director Broom.
Chairman and Commissioners, as always, it's an honor to be here. You have my submitted report. I'm here to answer any questions or concerns that you might have.
I did notice, looking at your report, we had 131 ambulance calls last month. I was told by somebody that one day this week, and by the 24-hour period, we had nine calls. I think that was Tuesday, maybe. And this is one that I'm proud of, because in the last couple of weeks, I've heard a few things, I talked to Director Broom about it, but the average time from the time that the dispatch answers a 911 call for EMS assistance to they get to the scene, the average time is 9.6, 9 minutes and 6 seconds. So I would probably put that time up against anybody. I had somebody call me a few weeks ago, and an incident happened at a football game, said that they were told it took 24 minutes to get an ambulance there. But we run two ambulance, and both of them were gone. That was the week that that two-year-old child had such a problem. I called Director Broom on Saturday morning after I got that call, saying it took them that long to get to an injury at the football field. And it was not 24 minutes. It's documented and recorded as to when these calls come in. The ambulance was at headquarters out here, and they were restocking and cleaning the ambulance, what they did. The actual time was just a little over four minutes. That it took an ambulance from the time dispatch got the calls and it got to the football field, it wasn't 24 minutes. Now, what happens in a lot of these scenes, and the same thing happened this week at the Rec Department, they work on that person out there on that field a good while, the doctors do when they come out and the trainers, before they decide to call an ambulance. So if you're sitting in the stands, you wonder why hadn't they already, why hadn't ambulance here? Well, the ambulance was there in four minutes. That's a pretty good time. So I'm proud of ambulance service and for what they do. It's the reason I took the time to say this. Any questions, Director Broom? If not, do what you want to do. Sit you off the agenda with the other. 6B, C is the Finance Director Doss.
Chairman, Commissioners, we have, our auditors have been here this week. They'll be back next week. They've told me that the system that we put in last year is tremendously helping this year on the audit, and so I wanted to let you know that process was going through. You have our written reports, and Chairman, if you will allow me, I will give you the cash balances for the.
Proceed.
So in our Raymond James account, the balance of that account is $2,122,843. Our general fund, the balance is $2,308,171. Our Splot 7 account, $3,000, excuse me, $1,397,485. The American Rescue Fund, $1,155,338. The Solid Waste Fund, $603,744. The T Splot Fund, $571,820. Our Emergency Fund, $398,779. Chairman, those are all the major funds. The total cash balance in our checking accounts is $7,221,791.61, plus the $2,122,843 that's in our Raymond James account.
Any questions, Mr. Director Doss? I got one before they start. What's the interest rate on Raymond James now?
Our interest rate on Raymond James, I have it here, Chairman. Most of our accounts are at 4.5, 4.4, 4.8, 4.7, 5, 4.5.
They in the fours.
5.1, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, 5.1.
Yes, sir. We have one at 5.1, but the rest of them are over 4.
Okay. I knew we were at 5 somewhere, maybe last month, but it wasn't all of them. Talking to Commissioner Clyde, I guess that was yours that was 6, wasn't it?
I wish.
Any questions, Director Doss? If not, 6D is Public Works Director Fisher.
Mrs. Chairman, Commissioners, good to be here. Reports you have before you are the reports for August 2023. You have any questions about any of the reports? I have nothing to add.
Okay, he's got several reports in. You see them, I'm sure, from the Water Department. I would say, though, I don't think he said it, but I'm going to say it again if he did. Last year, we had, I think, 81 or 84 new single-family residential permits. If you look at your report, year-to-date, this year, we are way behind. We are 45. The good news of it is, though, that we had, we did 10 the month of August, and that was the biggest month we've had this year. We hit 13 at the time of the last year. But we have had some months with only three. Talking to some of them, well, the Columbia County, theirs is way off, too, and I'm sure they are everywhere. But we did, it was a little encouraging to see that this, August was the biggest month we've had with few single families, and I put that a little more in perspective. One of our neighboring counties did 12 last year. We did 10 last month, so we still do pretty good, I think, compared to anybody else. Any questions for Director Fisher?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven is Ms. Virginia Hermanis, is that how you pronounce it?
Hermes.
Hermes. Is on the agenda to speak. Ms. Hermes, if you will come to the podium, I think you know, if you read the back, you have five minutes to speak to the commissioner on the subject you got, and I think in your package, you all have the letter that was sent to us by certified mail in your package. Ms. Hermes, you may go ahead.
Good evening. I come before you today as one of the people. Black's Law Dictionary defines people as, quote, "a state, as the people of the state, like the state of New York, a nation in its collective and political capacity, the aggregate or mass of the individuals who constitute the state. The people created a trust, which are the constitutions, the U.S. or the state constitution, which makes the people the grantor. Black's Law Dictionary of grantor is the grantor or settler or donor in a deed or settlement, one who creates trust, one who furnishes the consideration for the creation of a trust. Through, in, form the trust is created by another. The grantor is the creator of the trust. The person or group of people creates the government by writing the constitution. Since government is the system of polity in a state, and the stage is the people, then the settler of the government, we, the people, holds sovereign power to accomplish the legitimate ends of the government. This is possible because God gives man rights, which means men have the power to freely act, enjoy the blessings of liberty, and create government. Sovereign power is defined in Black's Law Dictionary as, quote, "the power in a state to which none other is superior or equal, and which includes all the specific powers necessary to accomplish the legitimate ends and purposes of government," unquote. The U.S. Constitution and state constitutions are the law of the land. The law of the land is due process of law, which means every person holds their right, and this is not case law or precedent. The constitution is a public trust, which in an entity designed to hold assets for the benefit of a specific people. In trust law, only what is written in the trust indenture, the constitution, is the law. No power or trustee of the trust may do anything against the written words of the trust or to the harm of the beneficiary, which is a breach of trust. Every constitution in the U.S. is a trust indenture that only exists to the benefit of the people. Black's Law Dictionary defines law of the land in part, quote, "Every citizen can hold his life, liberty, and property, and immunities under the prevention of the general rules which govern society." It goes on to say that everything which may pass under the form of enactment is not the law of the land. This is from Black's Law's dictionary that is used all over courts for definition. It isn't me saying it, that's not me saying it. The branches of government are separate from the constitution. The branches of government are corporations that are created and granted power to accomplish a general purpose expressly written in the constitution. The branches of government cannot and do not use power that the constitution does not grant. Trustees in the public trust of the constitution and state constitution swear oaths before they take office or receive any granted power. The constitution is what they swear to uphold and defend, which means that written words of the public trust are what they are bound to, not case law, precedent, executive order, emergency orders, et cetera. Trustees cannot breach the trust, and it is to take great care to perform duties and strict observance of his oath of office with the written constitution. Treason against the U.S., United States, includes betraying that state, the state, which means the people, to a foreign power, which includes anything that is subject to any jurisdiction, which means anything with authority outside the constitution with the power to act. Trustees show hostile contention when they use to grant powers of the people, excuse me, of the public trust against the beneficiary. The definition of foreign, according to Black's Law, means belonging to another nation or country, belonging or attached to another jurisdiction, subject to another jurisdiction, operating or solvable in any other territory, intrinsic outside, extraordinary or non-resident. People are the beneficiaries of the government. The constitution, a public trust, only grants power to government and sworn trustees, as long as no government power trespasses rights or harms people. Trustees are sworn servants to the constitution. Their oaths are binding, and breaching the trust includes using government power in contention against the people. Government cannot use power to attack the people, or else there is a war against the constitution. The maxim of law are universally admitted by everyone in the law. This means judges, lawyers, law schools, et cetera. They cannot be argued. The maxim of laws specify that all political power is inherent in the people, that government's subject is to the benefit of the people, and that a frequent recurrence to fundamental principles of the law is indispensable to good government. These maxims are from the Maxims of Law by Charles A. Weissman. Again, Black's Law Dictionary says that beneficiaries is one for whose benefit a trust is created. As one of the people and beneficiaries of that trust, I request that Lincoln County use paper ballots for voting and to reverse the consolidation of the precincts. I want most of all the winners of elections to be from fair and honest elections. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming. I really don't know whether I understand everything that you said, but I've read it and I've talked to Mr. Jackson, and I think I do, and I think, I don't know that this is a matter of anything that we can do. I think most of what you said has to be done through the State Board of Elections, Secretary of State's Office Elections Division, and the General Assembly who passes these laws. We don't have the, we don't have the ability to change a public ballot, I mean, a paper ballot, or one day voting in no advance voting.
No, you lose the count, you have to vote governments.
Okay. So anyway, we will take this and we'll take your letter under advisement, and we do appreciate you coming and taking your time to relay that to us. Thank you again. Item eight is the Sheriff's Patrol Vehicles Lieutenant Philip Morris, better known as Pull that microphone up, you, the Jolly Greens aren't, we won't hear that years ago.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me today. I'm here to see if I can't try to get approval to order us two new patrol vehicles, as we discussed in the work session the other week.
Okay, we all know what this is. We discussed it with him a couple of weeks ago at the work session. They are asking for two new vehicles, 23 Ford Explorer Police Interceptor Street Ready. Once they pick them up, they stripes, sirens, new radars, the whole nine yards. These vehicles are road-ready of $53,561, $107,122 for the two vehicles. Director Doss, we paying for this out of?
We're paying for it, one out of the general fund capital, which will be reimbursed from ARP, and one out of Splot 7, which is what we typically do, Chairman.
I knew it was coming out of the two things, but I couldn't remember which one we said. Okay, you heard the request from Lieutenant Morris. Any questions to him?
Chairman, I just had one.
Commissioner Clyde.
On the equipment installation, the sirens, radar, that, what are we doing by that part? Because Wade Ford didn't offer that, right?
Yes, sir. Wade didn't offer it, but the cars will be sent to Dana Equipment in Brinkin, I think it was, and they'll be the ones installing all the.
All right.
Any other question? Is there a motion that we purchase these vehicles?
I support, Mr. Chairman.
And to pay them out of the funds that Director Doss said. Got a motion, second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Need a discussion on the motion. Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, and the motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you for what all y'all do for Lincoln County, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Y'all take care.
Thank you. Item nine, Georgia managed, humanity's grant for the library. I think she has about four things that's on this deal, and I think after this month, we're going to probably have a consent order, a consent agenda when we have this many things we're going to have to go through. We're going to take them quick because... We're gonna take them quick, because we all to be with what we doing. We discussed them at Lincoln at the work session. Item nine, Director Park.
Yes, sir, I was just coming to ask the Commissioners for approval to apply for the Georgia Humanities Grant. It is a grant to go for twenty-five hundred dollars to go towards programming. It does require a one-to-one match through cash or in-kind sources, and for us, we would use in-kind sources for like, you know, the use of the Dover Room, the resources we already have, things like that.
Okay, any questions to Director Park? If not, is there a motion to approve up to twenty-five hundred dollars of Georgia Humanities Grant cycle?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Item ten is the unattended children policy Director Park.
Yes, Sir, Chairman, Commissioners, over the course of the last couple of months, we have had several children that have been left by either parents, guardians, grandparents, unattended in the library for more than several hours. And this is just a new policy to allow us to reach out to, you know, whoever's, you know, responsible for the child, law enforcement, to help kind of keep the situation under control, because there have been some children left before almost all day.
Okay, if you turn to the second page of this, first paragraph where it says, "A child is a person younger than fifteen years of age," I think we said in the work session that we would like to put fifteen years of age or younger.
I knew one says that. Yeah, I seen in the new one.
We have that. Has that change been made on the, on the one?
It's in your book.
Okay, just want to be sure that that change is in there where clearly, I think, Commissioner Clyde mentioned that the other day. Okay, no questions. Are there a motion to approve the policy?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
About time. Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye. Item eleven is Dover Power's Annex Rules. If you will notice the deletion of the tutoring part, Director Park.
Yes, Sir, this is just to adopt revised Dover rules to allow us to have a little bit more control over what goes on in our Dover Annex and who can use the room, and so we can keep it free of charge.
Okay, we discussed this one, too, with her. Is there any questions to Director Park? If not, is there a motion to approve the Dover Power Annex Rules and Policies?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. All in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Item number twelve is a big expense. I could just to Director Park.
Yes, Sir, so August eighteenth, our AC unit at the library decided, after thirty-seven years, to stop working. We have three proposals, one from Yohe, one from All Weather, and one from Augusta Chiller. I believe we decided to go with one with Yohe for fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, you going now, though, aren't you? You cooled?
Oh, it is stuck on sixty degrees.
Are they completely through now?
They are supposed to come back one day next week to fully program the thermostat. As of right now, we're stuck on sixty degrees, and I'm happy, so it's fine.
Not what?
We're stuck on sixty degrees. It won't go off.
Sixty-three?
Sixty.
You're wearing your overcoat. Director Doss, be sure we don't pay this until we got it all. We know it's all done. Okay, that motion that we do this with Yohe Plumbing, Heating, and Air, that is also owned by McCutchen's, is a local company, fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
That's a move, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Thank you. You're welcome to leave, too, if you want to. Item fourteen, Senior Citizens Food Service Agreement, Director Nancy Blon. Looks like a new person, doesn't she? I had to look back twice to buy focus, see who it was.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chairman. We doing the transit or the food service first?
I got transit. I got transit first. I'm sorry, do the transit.
Okay, all right, so this is just our annual renewal that we do with our transit grant. This year, again, we are gonna apply for two new vans. We weren't, we were not approved for the two vans that we applied for last year. So our total amount will be four hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, which includes the new tablets for the vans and the vans and the operating, which our operating expense will be one hundred and fifty-five dollars, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. One hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. And that's for the twenty-five budget.
That's what?
For the twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five budget.
And we pay, we pay ten percent of that, is that?
Ten percent.
We pay ten percent of the one fifty-five. Okay, that's, what's the chances, huh?
No, we pay ten percent of the one twenty-five, the two vans.
Okay.
The, the one fifty-five, five eighty-five is our budget for twenty-five, and we will get back fifty percent of that.
I gotcha.
We match it, I think.
I got some in notes written, written here, I don't know which one's which. I do know that I see the one that says motion to approve. Is there a motion that we approve the request?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Now, we're gonna go to item fourteen, Senior Food Services Agreement, Director Blon.
Okay, so we all know that the food is going up drastically, and so likewise, the CSARC received an increase from the vendor, and so our price will go up fifty cents for the hot meals per meal and sixty-one cents for the home-delivered meals. So the, the hot meals will go from five dollars and ninety-eight cents to six dollars and forty-eight cents, and the home-delivered meals will go from seven dollars and forty cents to eight dollars and one cent.
Okay, we talked about this, too, in my notes, says this is a total increase, eighty-point two percent. Could you just say that? Okay, I don't know where we need to spend a lot of time on this now. They, we already have. That motion we approve, be it, service agreement for feed the senior citizens with food services or something.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
That's second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Thank you, you're welcome to go if you want to. Item sixteen is RFP twenty-four, that's zero-zero-two grounds, keeping building and grounds, Director Doss.
Chairman, Commissioners, we discussed the other day, that we have, we put out, we have received several bids, and we are recommending, thank you, we are recommending Keener Contractor as a low bid for the building and grounds at a total bid award of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars annually. It would be a one-year contract with two renewals. Since we're a little late in starting, Chairman, we would start the contract October first, and it would end June thirtieth, and then we would renew for another full year. And those rates were locked in for three years. He did not put any escalators in his contract. And I would ask the board to accept the low bid for Keener Contracting for twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. We will prorate the first year and authorize the chairman to sign a contract once it's approved by the county attorney, which we, he already has a contract, and we're working through a couple of issues, not issues, we're making sure that I've got it all right.
Okay, you heard, you heard Director Doss, that we give it to the low bid of, is there a motion that we accept the recommendation on the grounds and lawn maintenance of the county building?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Clyde.
Director Doss, I was just gonna ask, since we're starting, not in our fiscal year, like you were talking about, is it a full, third, six months? Are we gonna end this contract at the fiscal year that we under?
So the first, the first year will be October to June, and it'll be a one-year, it will be less than a one-year contract. It will be a nine-month contract. And then we will, we have the option to renew for two one-year terms, and we, my recommendation is that we, we do those one year at a time. But his, his rate to us is firm for three years.
Gotcha. I missed what I said.
And if it's not working out, we don't have to renew.
Gotcha.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins.
Looking at the bid tabulations, where it says insurance requirements, is there any insurance requirement?
Yes, sir, there are insurance requirements. They're written in the contract. The vendor just didn't send them in with his RFP, but there's an insurance and a bond requirement in this.
And he does have?
He does have that, yes, sir.
He did, then, but he saw that he did have.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried. Item seventeen, Appointment to Development Authority, Commissioner Clyde.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My former Bobby Parker had resigned due to job changes and schedules, he couldn't make the meetings, and with the chairman and the commissioner's approval, I'd like to nominate Joe Jackson and take his place. Joe has contacted Ms. McNeese and yawned over everything, and we wanted to make sure he would be able to make our schedule, where they have already scheduled. So I nominate Joe Jackson to replace.
You have a recommendation for the District Three member of the Development Authority by Commissioner Clyde? Has a motion by him for Joe Jackson, is that second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second, any question? My answer to that question is, is just, he is, he is feeling an unexpired term. Be sure our record reflect that his term will expire December the thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four.
Right.
But he's got a short deal of time, and if you reappoint him, and you can reappoint him January twenty-five. All in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried.
Gotcha.
Let's send him a level. Item eighteen is the appointment to the Animal Board. That's my appointment, and I, all y'all have appointed, and I still haven't. I hate that, too, but I thought the Taxation Sisters Board was a hard board to get somebody to serve on, but I believe, I believe it was animal. What do we call animals? Let me, let me make a question. I mentioned to you then, and I tell you, I forgot what Karen and Malia and I talked about, and I want to talk to him about it, but I think that maybe, I'm not gonna get in a long discussion on this, and just go, tell you what I'm thinking and what I want to talk to Mr. Jackson about, then I'll probably bring it back to y'all at the work session in October. Nothing, I don't think, really, on the inside of this ordinance needs to change. You know, it's very new. We just voted on it a few months back. And I'll, I'll tell you why I'm thinking this, but after talking to her and the reason she told me, Animal Control Board means one thing, Animal Services Board means another thing. Columbia County is in the animal service business, not the animal control business. And after we looked at this, we pretty much in the animal service business and not the animal control business, because in the control business, you got vehicles out there picking up animals. Anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna look at that just a little bit more, but that would just be a change of the name of the ordinance, nothing inside of it would change if, if we can bring that back up, but that's something we're looking at. I hope to have a name, we're not, just a few weeks off now, since we're late for the Animal Control Board. I have a couple that's, that's getting close. So I don't, I'm not prepared. Nineteen, item nineteen is the point to the Elections Board, which is a board appointment by all of us. If you have a name, let me know. I have talked to Glenn Creek, Chairman of the Board of Elections, as well as Director Bolton at the Elections, of getting some names. We have a couple that are coming in, and before we did it, I wanted some, a little bio on these people to, to see what we're gonna do. So hopefully, we will have a recommendation. If y'all have anybody that you think that you might be interested in, you can let me know that, too, because this is all of our deals, so I've been struggling trying to find somebody. All right, that's Doss. The one we're looking forward to is item number twenty, is the Adjournment of Orders. September meetings, are there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none, all in favor of the motion, let be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion is carried, and we stand adjourned.